Can you hear me? All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started. So I'm Beth Rudolph, I'm the town manager. And Jen Caparella is here with me. She will be running the Zoom for this evening's meeting. We are using a webinar format, so there are two ways for you to participate. You can either enter a question in the chat or, excuse me, in the Q and A, and we can answer it that way. Or you can raise your hands and ask a question and you will be you will be called upon and admitted into the promoted as a panelist and then you can ask a question, ask me a question. So. The purpose of the town manager's hearing is to hold hearing on all other, all articles that are not subject to another hearing. So the planning board held a hearing on April, April 11th for their articles. And the finance committee will be holding a public hearing on April 26th at 7:30 PM via Zoom for their articles as well. The goal of this evening's meeting is to review the articles that are having published in the, in the warrant. You should received your, or you will be receiving your motion book in the mail. It's also available on the town's website. And the goal of the meeting is to review the articles, answer questions as we may be able to. And then the goal is not to have a public debate in this forum that that is saved for the floor of town meeting. So if you could just limit your commentary to questions, that would be great. I'm going to go ahead and get started. So I'll walk through each of the articles. If you have a question on any of the articles, again, you can put a comment in the chat or you can raise your hands. Article one is a majority vote. And this is to hear the reports of town officers, including the finance committee. And the proponent of this article is the select board. Article two is on the consent agenda. There's a two thirds vote required because it is a consent agenda item and there are other items in the consent agenda that require a two thirds vote. All items in the consent agenda are, will require a two thirds vote. So you'll see a similar note in several, in all of the other consent and items. Item two, article two is a standard article that we have with respect to failure of town meeting members to attend a sufficient number of town meetings. In the prior 12 months, this article is moved in second, that'd be indefinitely postponed. Article three requires a majority vote and the proponent for this article is the planning board. And this is, this article is to hear the report of the planning board. Article four requires a two thirds vote and the proponent of this article is the planning board. They held a public hearing on this article on April 11th, as I previously mentioned. Article five is another article where the proponent is the planning board and requires a two thirds vote as well. Article six requires a two thirds vote. This is a consent agenda item. And this is to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or other available funds, some of money to pay bills incurred in prior fiscal years. This article is proposed to be indefinitely postponed. Article seven requires a two thirds vote and is on the consent agenda. This article is to vote to transfer from water and sewer retained earnings or other available funds, the sum of money to supplement or reduce appropriations previously voted for fiscal year 2023 budget. And it is moved and seconded that this article be, article seven be indefinitely postponed. Article eight is a standard article we have both in the spring and the fall to transfer from free cash or other available funds, some of money to supplement or reduce the previously voted fiscal year budget, in this case for fiscal years 2023. There are eight motions moving forward under article eight. The first is to transfer a sum of $14,600,000 from free cash to the treasurer collector's budget, personal services budget. Motion two is for the town to transfer $40,000 from free cash to the legal budget for FY23. Motion three is for the town to transfer $70,000 from free cash to the FY23 DPW expense budget. Motion eight is for the town to transfer $80,811.81 from free cash to the FY23 DPW snow and ice personal services budget. Motion five is for the town to transfer $70,116.33 from free cash to the FY23 DPW snow and ice expense budget. Motion six is for the town to transfer $25,000 from free cash to the unemployment expense budget. Motion seven is for the town to transfer $20,000 from free cash to the Medicare expense budget. And motion eight is for the town to transfer a sum of $190,000 from free cash to the reserve fund budget to replenish what has been spent already in the current fiscal year. Motion nine requires a two thirds vote and this item is on the consent agenda. This is for the town. This is a standard article that we have every year. This is for the town to vote to appropriate $248,765.05 from the PEG access and cable related funds. of which shall be used for the PEG access service programming, monitoring the cable operators' compliance with the franchise agreement and to prepare for renewal of the cable franchise license, including any associated expert and legal fee services, $40,000 of which shall be used for capital purchases purposes. And the proponent of this is the town manager. See, we have one question in the Q and A. There's a question to define what PEG is. PEG is short for Public Education Government Access Channels. There was a, the PEG access and cable related fund was created at the spring 2019 town meeting to accept payments as a state determined since the, since the license is with the town and the funds must go to the town first. This article then allows the town to disperse the funds to Wincamp, our local cable access channel. There's a question from town meeting member, what happens if the consent agenda fails? We know it'll pass, but curious if we would go through them one at a time or if they or are they all just failed? How do you get an article out of the consent agenda? So if you look on the first page of your, you have a copy of your motion book. There is a, town, town meeting members do have a way to pull an item out of the consent agenda. So under the motion, upon the request of five voters at town meeting made before the vote is taken on this motion or otherwise at the moderator's discretion, an article should, may be removed from the consent agenda and shall be acted upon in the ordinary course of business at this time meeting. So if a town meeting member, upon the request of five voters would like to pull an item out of consent, that can be done prior to the vote of, on the consent agenda. Move on to article 10. Article 10 requires a two thirds vote. This item is also on the consent agenda to see if the town will appropriate a sum, sum of money from the parking meter fund to the Wedgely Park account and the town center parking account. And this article is proposed to be indefinitely postponed. Article 11 requires majority vote. This article is to see if the town will hear and act upon the report of the capital planning committee. And the proponent is the capital planning committee. Article 12, this is a two thirds vote on the consent agenda. This is a standard article that we have each year where we vote to transfer money from unexpendative capital accounts associated with completed projects to the capital stabilization or building stabilization funds. In this case, there are two motions. The first is for the town to appropriate a sum of $176,159.25 from surplus plus is previously appropriated or specific projects to the building stabilization fund in accordance with the table here on the screen. And the second motion is for the town to appropriate a sum of $15,889.50 from surplus is previously appropriated for specific, specific capital projects to the capital stabilization funds in accordance with the table present, presented here. And the proponent is the capital planning committee. Article 13 is a two thirds vote required. The proponent of this article is the capital planning committee. This article is to appropriate $395,000 to pay the cost of the Lake Street Bridge replacement project. This appropriation shall be in addition to the $2.1 million previously appropriated for Lake Street Bridge project. There were two votes previously taken regarding this project, one November 7th, 2019. And the other and the other at last fall town meeting where we did increase the borrowing authorization for that project. The funding for this $395,000 will come through a combination of unexpendant bond proceeds and borrowing. This project was bid earlier this year and did come in above the 200, $2.1 billion appropriation that we previously had. And so this request is to, is for additional funding to allow us to move forward the construction of the project. Article 14 requires two thirds vote. This article is to appropriate $400,000 to pay the cost of engineering services for traffic improvements associated with the Lynch School Elementary Project in the surrounding neighborhoods and includes all costs, including design and engineering. The proponent of this project is the select board and capital planning committee. It's jointly sponsored. This funding will come from the capital stabilization funding as part of the override. That was the general override that was passed by the voters in early in January of this year associated with the Lynch School traffic improvements. Is that a question in the Q and A? A question from Amanda Lewis. I thought we already approved a parking project for Lynch. So this is a, this is traffic improvements in the neighborhoods around the Lynch Elementary School on both sides. There was funding previously approved by town meeting for the traffic study. There was $75,000 appropriated by town meeting in spring of 2022. That was just the first phase of the study. And there were several public hearings held last fall with our traffic consultants to review the concept plans. And now this is the, is requesting the full cost of the design and engineering and permitting to, for those projects so that we can move forward into construction. We'll be back in front of town meeting for additional construction funding at a, in a future year. There's a question about why engineering is so expensive. So this is, there were 12 to 13 projects that were proposed as part of, as part of the original concept plans. There'll be some additional public outreach that's done as part of this engineering process and we may, those projects may evolve. So there's, part of this is additional communication and public outreach and public meetings. There is survey work at multiple locations and then there's preliminary design and then final design as well as environmental permitting associated with this, which is why we get to that $400,000 number. Any further questions on article 14? The question was, what is the expected construction cost? So when we had, when Tool, our, our engineering firm reviewed the projects last fall with the select board and our, and our two public hearings that we had last fall, the total expected cost of the project, including engineering services was around $3 million. At this point, that's just a, a projection. So once they get through this design process, we'll be able to develop better cost estimates. As we know, when we'll be going out to bid and, and have a firmer deadline, firmer timeline for our construction. They'll be able to put together a firmer cost estimate at that time. Is there a way for town meeting to object to some of the 12 projects or do we have to vote up or down on all? So all, all town meeting is doing at this point is approving the $400,000 for the traffic study. Town meeting is not approving the projects themselves. As I said, there'll be a series of public information sessions and public hearings as we get, assuming this funding goes forward. We'll be rolling out a public, public hearings and other public information gathering forums to get feedback from residents and neighbors on the projects that are proposed. And there'll be additional decisions made by the select board as we move through the design process in terms of the, in terms of the scope of the projects being proposed. And then ultimately, the project will come back to town meeting for construction funding. Okay. So no further questions on article 14. I'll move on to article 15. Article 15 requires a two thirds vote. It's moved and seconded that the town appropriate $175,000 from free cash for flood mitigation project maintenance related to vegetation management, wetland and tree vegetation tagging and permitting, including engineering services, construction and all other costs incidental and related there too. This is a pronoun of this article is the town manager. Just by way of background on this article, back in fall of 2021, town meeting funded the design and permitting of activities associated with vegetation maintenance along the portion of the Arizona River where the channel widening occurred several years ago as part of our flood mitigation program. That section is downstream of the Waterfield Road Bridge along Mystic Valley Parkway. That project with the design was, design and permitting where it was completed. And this $175,000 is a request to move forward the construction of those improvements, which is primarily vegetation management and other replanting that in accordance with our order of conditions that was approved by their conservation commission as well as engineering services and then annual monitoring for a period of two years after construction is complete. There's a question, is this flood mitigation work mandated? So this was initiative that was developed by the town starting in the mid 1990s. In terms of trying to design and implement projects to help reduce flooding around Winchester. This project was one of the projects that was completed probably in the order of 10 to 12 years ago was a channel widening project. And the, in order to widen the channel, we had to install what's called a mechanically stabilized earth on the the Mystic Valley Parkway side. And as vegetation grows into that, it can disrupt it and lead to the slope being destabilized. So it's important that we as a town go back and maintain and remove any problematic vegetation and then replant in accordance with the plan that was approved by our conservation commission. That's the reasoning for this project. A question is why is free cash versus capital or budgeted project? So this project was brought forward to the capital planning committee prior to the town meeting vote in 2021 and capital felt that it was a maintenance project and did not feel that it should be included in it as part of the capital cycle, which is why we're moving forward with it as a free cash vote. Will there be anything done about the deteriorating plastic retaining material? So again, that whole slope will be evaluated on the Mystic Valley Parkway side and any vegetation and replanting will occur in that area, including any dressing of that area with topsoil. There's a question, what is the tagging? I'm not sure I understand that there, there has been some tagging done by our consultant as part of the permitting process. So you may see some tags in the trees out there. That, that perhaps is what you're alluding to. And then one last question, could ARPA be used for this project? That's something I'd have to run by our town council. I'd be happy to do that and get a question, get the answer to that question prior to town meetings. Any further questions on article 15? Being done, we'll move on to article 16. Article 16 requires a two thirds vote and is on the consent agenda. This is a standard article we've had and for the past few years, not every time meeting, but a few time meetings. This is for the town to appropriate $85,000 from free cash to supplement the ever source account for the purposes of engineering and other consulting services regarding the location and construction of the ever source transmission lines in Winchester. So as many long-term town meeting members will, will recall, the town has a MOU with our memorandum, memorandum of understanding with ever source for both the 115 KV line and the 345 KV line for ever source to reimburse the town for the cost of field engineer service, field engineering services. These are engineers who work with ever source in the field on the town's behalf to ensure that our, that our our utilities and other resources are being supported during construction. They also help to review plans and changes as the project is constructed. These costs are reimbursable to the town after, as part of the MOU. So basically we sort of front the money and then we submit for reimbursement for, for this from ever source. Moving on to article 17. Article 17 requires a majority vote. It's moved and appropriated that the town it's moved, excuse me, the town appropriate $20,000 from free cash to supplement the traffic calming account for implementation of, of one or more traffic calming measures to mitigate existing traffic and pedestrian impacts caused by the ever source 345 KV project as agreed to an MOU between the ever source and the town. So as some folks may recall, similarly to the, to the article 16 as part of our MOU with ever source on the 345 KV project, we negotiated to have them reimburse us or contribute up to $200,000 to the town to offset the cost of, of the project in the form of mitigation dollars for traffic calming to be, to be designed and constructed at the towns as, as a town desires in the quarter where the, with the 345 KV project is, is occurring. So to date, town meeting approved, we, to date, we've received $10,000, a check for $10,000, which was previously appropriated at fall 2021 town meeting. We've sent that since fall 2021, we received an additional $20,000 from our source as part of the the implementation of that MOU. And so we are moving forward with asking town meeting to appropriate that $20,000 into this dedicated traffic calming account. And then at some point in town, once we've, you know, once ever sources completed their work and we've received all the reimbursements that we're going to receive, we will evaluate options on how we want to spend this money. The first question is article 17 for speed humps. Now this, this reimbursement is, this $20,000 is for work along the route of the 345 KV project, not the 115 KV project. The 115 KV project is installing, ever source is installing for us speed humps on Woodside Road in accordance with the plans previously approved by the select board. The next question, could be installed some speed tables on main with this money? The, the goal of this funding is to be on the, in the quarter where the 345 KV project has been under construction. So it's likely that it would be Cross Street and Washington Street quarter where we complete this work. The next question, to verify, understand correctly, the town puts funds into ever source account and ever source reimburses us for those funds. So just to clarify, there are two, two different ways in which we receive the funds. So the first for article 16, this $85,000 that were, that were kind of, as I said, sort of fronting to have our field engineer under contract, this is reimbursable by ever source. Article 17, as part of the MOU, there were certain milestones that as ever source achieved them, the town would be paid for. There were different, there were varying amounts that we would be paid in accordance with the milestone, milestone schedule that ever source. Once they completed certain tasks, the town would receive a payment. And so to date, we've, as I said, we received 10,000 that was appropriated at fall 2021 town meeting. And now we have an additional $20,000 coming to us that, that we've already received actually. And now we're just, that has closed to free cash that now we're just appropriating into this traffic calming account. The next question, is this going to the new bike lane on Main Street? Now this is ever source, the Main Street work is as, as part of the 115 KV line. Ever source is repaving Main Street and Bacon Street in the areas where they did their work. And as part of that, they have agreed to install the bike lane striping that was approved by the select board at their meeting on Monday evening. Next question, Washington Street is ruined north of Cross Street and it needs a full depth reconstruction. Will this be repaired correctly? So yeah, so the town will be working with ever source. They are, they are required to do a curb to curb, curb to curb repaving of any roads that they have impacted. And there are certainly areas where there be, may be additional restoration required. So we'll be working with them on any necessary improvements in those areas. Hi, any other questions on article 17? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to article 18. Article 18 is a standard article that you see, well, not every year, but the past few years. This is for the town to amend the water and sewer rates that are currently in effect in accordance with chapter seven, section three of the code of bylaws. So in this case, you can see here is the proposed rates, the board, the select board earlier this, earlier this month, actually last month in March of 2022, working with our consultant, our DPW did our rate study. As you may recall, in last spring, the town increased the water and sewer rates three and a half percent for FY23. And as part of that, they looked at our consultant at a long-term projection. This is really just implementing the next phase of that where we'll be, we are proposing a six and a half percent rate increase for FY24 in order to support the rate plan and to make, ensure that we have healthy retained earnings in our water and sewer enterprise funds over the next year. Happy to take any questions on this one. Article 19, article 19 is a majority vote. This is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer, transfer from available funds of some of money to defray the expenses for the town for fiscal year beginning, oh, excuse me, this is the budget article. So this is the finance committee's article. The finance committee will be having a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday 26th, April 26th. So I'm not going to, article 19, article 20 and article 21, all those three articles are the budget articles that the finance committee will be reviewing at their public hearing on the 26th. Article 18, where do shortfalls come from if rates are not raised free cash? So the, the town operates are, it's the water and sewer enterprise fund. So if we, if we have a shortfall, we take the money from retained earnings and we try to keep a, you know, a balance, a range. We want to keep our retained earnings above a certain percentage. And if we dip below that, then we would, you know, it gets to the point where we would, you know, be in jeopardy of not having any retained earnings in our enterprise fund. So that's not a position we want to, we want to be in. So we try to, working with our consultant, we try to project out our capital needs as well as our MDA assessment for the coming year. And we try to, as much as we can project out where the revenues may be, taking a conservative approach because water usage is, is very much based on whether we're in a drought or whether in a wet season. So hopefully that answers the question. We'll have our consultant at town meeting from the Abraham's group who works with, was, works with us every year on our water and sewer rates. The next question, some years ago, water and sewer was put in a tax rate. Should it now be reversed? I think that's probably a larger question and probably more than one than I can answer as part of this conversation tonight, but maybe it's something you would want to bring up with the select board and, and, you know, as part of their conversation or future, in future years. Okay. Article 22. Article 22 requires a two thirds vote. This item is on the consent agenda. Article twenty two requires a two thirds vote. This item is on the consent agenda. This is for the town to raise and appropriate thirty thousand dollars to the building stabilization fund. This proponent of this article is the finance committee. And the background on this article is um, several years ago when the uh, in, in two thousand twelve, the building stabilization fund financed the installation of new um, energy efficient boilers at the Morocco School. And the, at the time, there was a commitment that thirty thousand dollars would be transferred from the general fund to the building stabilization funds each year to support the debt service on the bonds for the installation of that boiler. Okay, article twenty three, article twenty three um, requires a two thirds vote. This item is on the consent agenda. Uh, this is a standard article every span, every spring um, for the town to fix the maximum amount that can be spent during fiscal year twenty twenty four for the revolving funds established to pursue it to Winchester's code of bylaws. So we have several revolving funds for the archival center, energy use, supportive health clinics, grass fields, synthetic fields and historical commission. And so this article is, um, you can see from the table, sets the spending limits that those, each of those accounts have in a given year. And the proponent of this article is the finance committee. And article twenty four. Article twenty four is uh, for the town to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the town manager and select board to borrow money in anticipation of revenue for a fiscal year beginning July first of twenty twenty three. Uh, this is a standard article that we have every year that allows the treasurer to borrow funds uh, for the following fiscal year. Article twenty five, this is a two thirds vote required on this item is on the consent agenda. Um, this is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money as may be made available from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for maintenance, repair, alteration, relocation or other improvements of townways. Again, this is a standard article that we see every spring. This is uh, what we can, what's commonly called our chapter ninety funds from the state and that allows us to move forward with expenditure of those funds. There's a question that came in on the chat. Uh, the question was, what was the two hundred thousand on fields spent on? So um, this actually, there's the proposed um, FY twenty four numbers for the grass fields and synthetic fields are each sub um, twenty five thousand dollars higher than they were in FY twenty three. Um, and so in FY twenty three, the spending limits on those two accounts was seventy five thousand dollars. And I would have to defer to the um, recreation department or the way in which they've spent their funds in both of those accounts. For this year, we can certainly get a breakdown on that if that's of interest to people for town meeting. Article twenty five. Article twenty five requires a two thirds vote. This item is on the consent agenda. I'm sorry, this is the one I just spoke on. So this is the chapter ninety money that I, money that I mentioned. So moving on to article twenty six. Article twenty six is the um, article for the personnel board. Uh, there are eight motions proposed under article twenty six. I'll just talk through each of them briefly. Uh, two motions, motions one and two uh, relate to municipal non-union cost of living adjustments. Um, this is, there's a proposed two and a half percent COLA for municipal and non-union employees for FY twenty four. There's one motion to approve the changes to the applicable wage schedules. That's motion one. And then the second motion is to fund the wage increases related thereto. This change will go into effect for July first of twenty twenty three. Motion three is for the town's compensation plan to be um, amended effective July first, twenty twenty three. Um, and this is for um, to add a step to the council on aging drivers at a rate of twenty one dollars and eighty seven cents per hour. And this change will go into effect on July first of twenty twenty three as well. Motion four is for the town's compensation plan to be amended effective July first, twenty twenty three uh, in accordance with the uh, information provided here. So schedule three for the PT compensation schedule will be amended and will be adding a PT eleven bibliographical, bibliographical services librarian, adding a PT twelve financial analyst position, reclassifying the water treatment plan operator position from a PT thirteen to a PT fifteen and then deleting the library network administrative position, which is currently a PT nine. Motions five and six and seven are related to the clerical union contract that was settled earlier this year and signed by the union and the select board. So um, motion five amends the compensation plan and then motion six and seven fund the cost of those, of that contract settlement for FY twenty three, which we are currently in as well as for FY twenty four, which will be the next fiscal year. And then finally, motion eight uh, transfers a sum of three thousand three hundred and four three hundred thirty four dollars, seven hundred and forty five dollars from the um, to the unallocated wage account to provide to fund the increases for collective bargaining agreements that have not yet settled. So we have the patrol union and our DPW workers unions that have not settled yet. A comment that article twenty five should not be on the consent agenda. So um, as I mentioned, you are welcome to uh, in accordance with the procedures outlined on uh, on the first page of your um, motion book, anytime meeting member or five time meeting members coming together can uh, vote to pull, request that as an article be pulled off the consent agenda. I would just note that article twenty five is a standard article that we have every year on um, and just allows the town to accept the chapter ninety money from the state. Does not have anything to do with how it's, how it's expended. Article twenty seven. There are no art, there is no motions currently um, under this article, if, if there are anything that we need in terms of free cash usage to balance the budget at the end of the year. This would be where that, where that would come in. Um, so at this point, we don't have any motions under this article. And then article twenty eight, this is the last article. Um, and again, this is, there are currently no motions received to date. This is to hear or accept committee reports to solve old committees or authorize new committees. And the proponent of that article is the select board. And that is all of our articles for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions that people may have. There's one here in the chat. Oh, just saying thank you. Thank you, everybody. If you have any questions, once you get your motion books, please feel free to reach out to me or the town clerk. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you have or to get the answers to any questions that you may have before the first night of town meeting, town meeting, which is scheduled for April twenty fourth. And just a reminder for everybody, that time meeting does start at six thirty PM, also a little bit earlier than we have in the past. With that, I don't see any other questions. Thank you all for coming. Good night, everybody.